This time I'd like to call to order the meeting of the first county commission. Today is Valentine's Day, February fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three, and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let the record show that all three commissioners are present, Commissioner Smith, Commissioner Thomas, Commissioner Joe. And we will move on with recognition of the public with anybody that is not on the agenda. A review of the bills?
I would move to pay the bills that have been properly presented and approved.
I'll second that.
Been properly moved and seconded to pay the bills because they have been properly presented and approved. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Yes. Moving on to our tax correction list for Narissa's assessor. We have one. Both for the amount of two hundred and forty dollars.
Just one G grade. At this time, I approve the tax correction list as presented by the assessor.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to approve the tax correction on a two thousand nineteen G in the amount of two hundred thirty-four dollars and ninety-four cents. Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Yes. All right, no questions, and we'll move on to our nine thirty-one appointment. We have Duane Hamilton with a bunch of revisions or revisions.
For selling water?
I thought so, yeah.
Was it?
We don't know.
No.
Anyway, I just have two budget revisions here. One is to receive money in to put into Rayline money for repairs of two of the cruisers. One was deer strike, one was hit by another individual. To repair those two vehicles in the amount of at least ten thousand four hundred, four, four hundred twenty-two dollars even. The other one is to receive into the central garage budget in the amount of ten thousand ninety dollars. Check for prestig, or car number five that we return back to Enterprise. So that was the amount of money that goes back to that.
We have two budget revisions here.
Yeah, she only needed one.
There was some confusion on that of my part. I thought that this one was replacing the first.
No, you have any, you have any? I'm sorry, we just.
Oh, no, I didn't have any.
We never got, she, she never sent us for the ten thousand four hundred. This is the one that you gave.
No, I know this one, and then what was the ten four twenty-two that was, well, insurance too?
Yeah.
One, one was insurance, one was payback. Where after we returned the car off lease, we didn't buy it out like we're going to the other six or whatever.
Okay, I was just confused, what does the repairs from insurance claim?
That's that one.
That was the one she did not send us.
Obviously, she didn't change.
Oh, that's fine, that's fine, I'm sorry.
Yeah, but this one actually is for.
Insurance.
One of them I need to.
This one's Enterprise right here.
This is the insurance, this one, this is going into this line item is for upsetting the new crew.
Right.
We're back there. So this is where.
Yeah, like I said, she, the only one she sent us was the one for Enterprise.
So that was not for insurance, so I'll have to, that's correct.
Okay.
The reason.
Yeah, this is just received in from.
That, that's fine. I was just confused there.
Are those your copies going?
Well, I mean, I don't think.
You probably need to sign back where they used to make the simple bet that we need to get the lines.
Um, I would be able to be approved, the two budget revisions for nine one one in the amount of ten thousand and ninety dollars and ten thousand four hundred and twenty-two dollars.
Wait a minute, just before you make that motion, it's not for nine one one, it's for central garage.
Oh, okay, okay, I'm sorry. And then that's central garage.
I'll second that.
Been properly moved, second and motion amended for the, the line item that we are adjusting for the budget revision to be central garage to approve both budget revisions as presented. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Yes.
Sorry about that.
Oh, no, it's all right, I know it gets confusing.
You're fine, you're fine, I was just.
Yeah, like I said, the only one I saw that she had sent us was the one for Enterprise.
Oh, actually, so your, your copy is right, sell vehicle.
Uh, yeah.
Yeah.
So this is not the correct one, no, this is. Where did this copy come from?
Yours is right.
I don't know, that's what, that's the two I told her to do.
This one is signed in blue ink, is this your original? Is this one good to sign?
That one's good, that one.
Let me see, that one's for.
That's for enter, that's for the insurance.
But this one's, this one's wrong, right? That would be the right one.
I've got a shred.
Yes, this is.
This thing's good. Okay, and then which one needs?
This is, this is.
We're shredding, we're shredding. Just trying to make sure we have it right here.
There you go. Because this is actually the insurance. I don't know where that came.
That's the one that was in our file.
All right, she only copies it.
I'll just give you the.
Yes, you can just actually just leave it here. She'll get lost, one more done, okay.
Thank you all.
All right, let's move along, thank you, Duane.
Yep.
For a little minutes.
I would like to approve the minutes for January thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three.
Been properly moved and seconded to approve the minutes for January thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Yes. State settlement list.
I would move that we approve the state settlement list for January thirty-first through, um, two thousand twenty-three through January thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three for Leon B. Cress, AKA Leon Vance Cress and Harold E. John.
I'll say.
It's been properly moved and seconded to approve the state settlement list, January thirty-one through January thirty-one, two thousand twenty-three for Cress and John. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Yes. PIBs.
This time, maybe it's expensive reading PIBs except under the record, they were first, second, and the eighth.
I would like to second that.
It's been properly moved and seconded to dispense with the readings of the proceedings in vacation and open court session and enter them into record for February first, February second through February eighth, two thousand twenty-three. Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Yes. We have nothing under the fiduciary commissioner report, and that brings us to our old business. We have EMS ordinance discussion, which I don't think we're going to do anything because we have a work session of eleven. Then that brings us to CARES funding. The county commission often receives requests, we go to meetings, the EMS advisory meetings monthly, and we often receive, as we even did get some correspondence today, asking for potential additional CARES funding that we have. And I've given some thought to a contribution. There had been some, I would say, some misunderstanding about the initial CARES money that the county received. But we, I believe, have been very fair and reasonable in giving out some of that to our EMS to assist them.
I'll agree.
And so, but at this time, I asked Joe to give me a balance of what we had currently contributed to EMS out of the CARES funding. And so we're just going to go over that because I'm, I've just been thinking about a lot of things here. So contributions to EMS out of our CARES funding and payment in November of twenty-one was seventy-two thousand three hundred and six dollars. Then we gave a CARES payment in May of two thousand twenty-two of sixty-one thousand eight hundred two dollars and ninety-nine cents. CARES payment September of two thousand twenty-two was sixty-four thousand seven hundred and twenty-three thousand eighty-one cents with total CARES contributions to EMS of one hundred ninety-eight thousand five hundred sixty-two dollars and eighty cents. We have, what's the exact total of the CARES, two, two hundred sixty-three thousand?
Two hundred sixty-three, six hundred nine, eighty-two.
Okay, okay, so.
Nice numbers approved, I mean, all the earmark? The stuff that was like to the Rolls-Royce monitor.
Anything that came out of CARES.
Okay, so it makes, that's why I was asking, the one year we bought from Mason Town.
Yeah, that includes earmarks.
And the, okay.
Yes, yeah. And so I really have thought about this and thought about what EMS has been doing through COVID and even before and after, you know, as we're winding down hopefully off of the pandemic. And I really, I don't want to say they stepped up because the service, they're, they're doing their jobs and, and we've been able to give some additional funding to assist them in doing those jobs. And, and that's a good thing. But today, I, I really think that with the requests that have come in, I really feel that I am feeling inclined to give one final tranche of money to our local EMS organizations that have been serving the county of the CARES funding. And then I would like to, you know, not spend any other CARES funding, not make any additional, hold it, hold on to it, I guess, for Preston County.
No.
You can actually have.
Because the last one I got was this one.
Yeah, yeah, so with what we have left and the, the equipment that these organizations have been purchasing, there's trucks on the road, there's different things, I feel that to give them just one more infusion and then, you know, I want to see them get on, and we can discuss this further in a work session, but I'd like to see them get in the habit, the expectation to be that they have to come present to the county commission if they want money annually, and we do it based on need, what their figures are looking like, those types of things. And so with that.
Can I jump in a little bit here?
Sure.
I've been thinking about this a lot, a lot, a lot, a lot, a lot lately, just to say that. And I understand that Dave made the promise initially to give pretty much all the CARES funding to EMS. But I really like the situation we're in right now with all the EMSs just coming toward, like if they need, you can eat the, what was that, the sky?
The stair chair.
Yeah, the stair chair, and Mason Town had that request. I'm just open to earmarking sixty-three thousand for that in no particular way. And they just have to come before us and we approve every request on a case-to-case basis.
Sure, sure, well, I have, you know, given a lot of thought to this and with what they've purchased and, and the different things, you know, I feel that the county commission ultimately has to have the oversight of, you know, approving each expenditure for what they're, what they're using, you know, when we give those dollars away, we have to be able to provide, make sure the service is being provided, and they are providing the service. And so, you know, I just, and we can, you know, I, I do have.
I mean, for any, for me, any CARES funding going out moving forward would have to invoice to invoice come before the county commission and be approved.
And there's nothing, there's nothing wrong with that, but here's, here's what, okay, so I'm, I am going to make a motion. I'm going to make a motion that we earmark sixty-three thousand dollars of the, the CARES funding to be a final earmark for outside agencies, EMS agencies of our CARES funding and to Preston County Commission reserve the rest of that money for our own need. I would, in that motion, like to do it, break it down by the district, the areas that they're currently serving. So Camp is currently serving three areas in the county, which would be twenty-seven thousand dollars to Camp. Earmarked, Terre Aude, nine thousand, earmarked, four one territory, or district, Brewston, nine thousand, Union, nine thousand, that totals fifty-four, I would like to do Rolls-Royce, four thousand. And then that. They are, and they're hiring.
They have a, two full-time ENTs that are also drivers and a part-time driver.
So that brings us to fifty-eight thousand. Now Camp and Terre Aude both have been pulled out of their service areas through mutual aid agreements to assist Brewston, often, and other areas in the county. So I would like to take the last little bit and give a thousand each to Camp and Terre Aude for assisting. That brings Camp's total allocation to twenty-eight thousand, Terre Aude to ten thousand. And then thinking of all of the first responder stuff that's going on, I really feel that we need to just put a little bit towards those programs because they are responding till EMS can get their, those services, and, you know, and it's important. So a thousand dollars to Mason Town, they are running a first responder program, Mason Town Fire Department, a thousand to the Tompkins Fire Department for the first responder program, and then earmark in that to Terre Aude as they are finalizing getting their first responder back. They had to change and, so they haven't been out as they should be, but they are working on getting that all up and running again. So they cannot receive theirs until they have all their stuff going again. That brings that to sixty-three, so that would be my motion. And to add to that, I would like all expenditures must be approved in these earmarks by the county commission on case-by-case. So I, I want to, you know, make this the final contribution and reserve the rest of it for the county commission's need. That would give us two hundred thousand.
And that would give us one hundred and seventy-one thousand five hundred sixty-two.
No, no, it would give us two hundred thousand, six hundred and nine dollars and eighty-two cents, correct?
Correct, yes. This is what was left over, right?
No, no, this total here is.
Then why is that, I mean?
Well, this, I asked Joe to pull up, well, let's go ahead and finish what.
Well, I, I have some discussion on this.
All right, so I made the motion, do we have a second?
Just a second. Okay, so I see what you're saying now, okay, I thought that was what was left over. That's why I just wanted to make sure I'm on the same.
Do we have a second on the agenda? All right, any further discussion?
So, I mean, I like all the work you put into your breakdown, but I would truly just like it to be sixty thousand or sixty-three thousand earmarked. And that's what we had a mission case-to-case basis.
That's what I said, we're earmarking it, the breakdown is earmarked and they have to submit their stuff to get it.
I would just want it to be sixty-three thousand even.
That's, that's what I did.
With, with no breakdown. I think, um, basically, basically where I'm getting at here is toss the sixty-three thousand. If any EMS agencies have requests, they can come before the county commission and they can be approved on a case-to-case basis. So I would probably not vote in favor of this motion.
Well, there are, with this, there is, I'm just trying to think here, so.
You're fine.
With, with doing it, they have to still come through and we earmarked it, but we have to.
We still have to have it, show them what is being.
We have to be fair while they're doing by district, you know, we can't, I mean, what if, you know, and let's just throw this out there, what if Rolls-Royce came forward and said, you've got sixty-three thousand, I want all of it, and, you know, it's a, it's a need that needs to be met. I think we need to have it earmarked so that they each have a fair shot at some of that funding that we're allotting for that, so, I, I mean, I see what you're saying, keeping it whole, but.
I feel like we're burning through this CARES funding, we have a lot of needs, and if they want to do the late work and come in and request the CARES funding, that's fine, but just divvying out more CARES funding for the EMSs, I'm not in favor of that. Seriously, it's just, I'll leave it at that.
Well, I just don't see what the, the difference is, I, it's earmarked or it's, I mean, sixty-three thousand is earmarked regardless.
It's earmarked, but it hasn't, it's not being spent till it's approved for whatever the expenditure should be. So at any time, like I said, no, that's not a valid expenditure, we're not going to reverse that.
I guess, I guess what I'm saying is maybe I don't agree to the sixty-three thousand dollar earmark. That I think it should just be a case-to-case basis, so, like, we just got that email today. Or, say, Rolls-Royce had a request, we would just approve it on a case-to-case basis and there would be no earmark.
So.
The problem with that is though, Hunter, the way I see it anyway, is if you do that, you don't set a limit, then you can't do it because if everybody comes forward, you just keep improving. A small amount, 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 the next thing you know, you don't have anything. So you can't do it at a certain level and say, this is all we're going to budget, no more. Nothing else, you come all you want and we're not giving you another penny. And you say, that's it, sixty-three's it. If you spend the sixty-three, fine, if you don't, well, it's awesome.
I don't, I don't even know if I want to spend sixty-three, maybe that's our cap, but no more. And I know you guys agree with that, but I'm just saying, mine, well, how I would like to do it would be a case-to-case basis, no earmarking from agency to agency. Because even though, and I know how you break that down, and that's actually a very good way, by districts, and then you're throwing the fire departments in there, but their needs from department to department may not be the same. Union could have a bigger need than, and I think that's the way we're heading, heading with the ordinance and the levy, is even though Brewston may bring more money in via levy or an ordinance, maybe Union needs more of that funding.
I, if we get to the point where we're moving forward with a levy or an ordinance, I agree that the county commission should have direct oversight of how that money is put out to be.
Well, yeah, I think that's just an example, and I, I really just don't care for a breakdown. If they want to bring, if they want to bring individual requests for a couple thousand here, a thousand there, they can, but I will not vote in favor of that motion.
Okay, well, let's take it to the vote, I made the motion and I'm voting yes. Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
No.
Commissioner Thomas?
No.
Okay, motion carried, thank you for that, I agree with what you're saying, I mean, I do, but I also think that we have to have some sort of.
No, I would agree with the sixty-three thousand dollar earmark.
That's all right, that's all right, this is how, this is the process, and it's not easy to get to any of these points, so.
And that'll leave us with a two.
Two hundred thousand.
That has not been, that has not been served for anything else.
Yes, yes.
So on the bottom of this form, the total contribution for EMS agencies, I asked him to pull that up. Union and eight, okay, so annual annual contributions of three thousand is what historically the county commission has done. And they gave three thousand to Camp, Terre Aude, Brewston, Brandonville, and Union in two thousand eighteen, nineteen, and twenty. They did receive that totaling thirty-six thousand dollars. And so with that total contributions to EMS since two thousand eighteen, taking what we've given in CARES funding and our normal contribution, two hundred thirty-four thousand five hundred sixty-two dollars and eighty cents. So that was.
Yeah, that's the contribution.
Yeah, to, to EMS. So, I mean, granted, it took a pandemic, however, we have definitely upped the game in assisting EMS in the county with some of that additional CARES funding over the last few years, so. All right, anything else for CARES funding?
No.
Anything else, anything else, John?
I think I'm good.
Perfect.
Where are we at, Hunter?
All right, we will move on then to ARPA funding, do we have anything that we need to do for ARPA funding today?
We have. I didn't see anything.
We got just one updated bid for Cannon Hill, correct, Rolls-Royce Historical Society?
Yeah.
The one bid that he gave, yes.
That was crazy, no, I can't, I need to touch base with him and see.
Well, I think, did you get a chance to email back and ask what the difference in the scope of work is? Because they're not even, that concerns me because they're not even remotely close to being.
So just to put it out there, so when Cannon Hill or Rolls-Royce Historical Society for the Cannon Hill ARPA request came in and they had one bid, and we requested that they would give another one, but the second bid is way higher than the first bid, and it's just unusual.
That they're not even close, so I'd like to see what the work is.
Maybe the, maybe the second bid company is doing a lot more work.
I mean, one was like seventy something, one was like a hundred twenty-six something.
And I think, and I think what the problem is, I don't have the first one with me, I have the second one with me.
Oh, that's mine, great, why don't you stop here?
I have it on.
That's trash.
That's for trash.
I guess I shouldn't, I don't know, email, I guess I don't. I was trying to compare the two and see what the, what the difference, what, you know, what? So it wasn't being apple, it was being apple bash, you know?
Here we go.
Because there's different things there.
Yeah, but here's the, the Jenny's second bid.
Oh, that's the one I got, I got that one, I need the other one, the first one's the one I was looking for, that one I have.
The first one.
That one I have.
Joe, you have something to have the first bid?
I'm looking right now.
I just wanted to compare the two and see what the difference between the two was, and I couldn't find it last night, so I don't know if I didn't have it.
It should be on the draw.
Yeah, I guess I was looking in the wrong spot.
I don't have the official estimate here, it's what they put in the application.
Okay. Yeah, that's all I got, it was the.
Yeah, okay, that, this I remember, I was hoping maybe we had another thing, but I guess I wasn't missing it, I just don't have it. All right, one second. It was, it was just short of seventy-two, it was seventy-one, eight, twenty-five.
Eight, twenty-five, so it's seventy-two.
And.
I think I'm going to read.
It's still the same number of.
Try to clarify that a little bit.
Yeah, it's still the same information, it's still that fifty, kind of feet a ditch.
Rodney, is there anything you can think of that would assist in a project like that outside of ARPA funding?
I was just thinking, that could probably be via, via tourism and historical.
Here's the issue, here's what.
There would be a lot of funding options.
Now, here's, here's the problem.
Okay.
I can tell you the problem. Yeah.
Okay.
They've got a hundred and sixty culverts are putting in, as opposed to only two on this one.
I mean, if you don't put the culverts in?
The culverts, you have, well, I put a, if you're going to put a culvert in, the water's not going to run in there. It's going to dry out, it's going to wash out in a month.
A hundred and sixty?
Yeah, they put a hundred and sixty culvert, which it wouldn't surprise me, you ever been up that road?
Is it a hundred and sixty or a hundred and sixty feet?
It doesn't say that, it says linear feet, so I'm assuming that that, but I can't see.
It would be a hundred and sixty, you don't need to have a culvert every five feet. The regular made out of culvert.
I assume it's linear feet. It's a mile, it's a mile up there, yeah, it's a mile up there. But, what's the difference? See, this doesn't break it down by cost of each thing like this one does. This one has each thing he's doing broken down.
Okay, well, I'm sure we can.
I think we just need to look into it.
I just wanted to, I just wanted to note, I just wanted to note that.
Yeah, yeah, okay, anything else for ARPA funding today?
No.
All right, we'll move on to facility, is he here, is he coming?
He is, no, no.
Okay, all right, and then county coordinator report. First item is Preston County Historical Society Letter of Support.
That's his name?
Yes.
Yeah, so at the previous meeting, when you voted to head and earmark the ten thousand dollars for the grant match, expressed that we would like to, that we would like to get a letter of support together for that. And so there is one that's now in your packet.
Yeah, I read through it and it looks good, I mean.
So at this point, I would ask that the president be authorized to sign the letter of support for Preston County Historical Society Grant Application.
This time, I would motion that we authorize the president to sign this letter of support for Preston County Historical Society.
Grant application, second.
Been properly moved and seconded to authorize the president to sign the Preston County Historical Society Grant Application Letter of Support. Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Hopefully they concede that, right? Fingers crossed, there we go.
All right. Moving on, we already took care of our budget provisions, we have no additional.
No.
Miscellaneous correspondence.
Under miscellaneous correspondence, Commissioner Smith received a request for another letter of support for Mountain Laurel Medical Center, which is proposing a merger with Brewston Family Medicine. So I prepared another letter of support.
Um, well, and I.
I would really just like to dig a little bit deeper and get a little bit of more information on what kind of merger it is and.
Well, is it a timeline on that, Joe?
They did not provide one.
Okay, because I was slightly concerned, it did sound like to me, as Commissioner Thomas had pointed out, that, that they're looking to also do a pharmacy, but Brewston just has a, has a new, and how new is Baldinus?
Uh, well, I mean, initially, the original owner of the building had a pharmacy, but Eric's only been in there for three, four years now.
Yeah, and so I don't know that.
So I don't know. I don't know if that was a, um, so to give you guys some information, Brewston Family Medicine rents the end of their building out to Eric Baldadina with Highland Brewston Pharmacy. A lot of people just call it Brewston Pharmacy. And in the initial email, they spoke about providing a pharmacy. I don't know if that was just a typo or they're partnering with Eric that.
I mean, so the letter of support, it doesn't really get into the weeds, it just says that we support the merger, correct?
That's.
And so, I mean.
I mean, I, I think I was a hundred percent supportive of the merger. I just wanted, I was just wondering if we had any additional information on that.
So, I, I mean, I, I, as it's written, I see that it's fine, first go ahead and do the letter of support. I think where the work would come in on the other part is a separate matter and we can look at that. Cause I certainly don't wanna condemn trying to put a pharmacy out of business that's doing good, you know?
But I also don't wanna see a medical center that wants to be put in there, not happen.
And I think we need to.
Especially when it says, is to provide the highest quality of primary care to our community regardless of ability to pay.
And then they're also gonna be adding behavioral health services to, um, the, um, family practice.
That's good.
Yeah, that's really good because we don't have a whole lot of that in our county. So with that, I'd like to move that we approve the letter of support for Mountain Laurel Medical Center and authorize the President Samantha Sten to sign.
Second.
Then properly moved and seconded to approve the letter of support for Mountain Laurel Medical Center and authorize the President to sign. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Yes.
Who does the letter of support go to?
Do what now?
Who gets the letter of support, does it?
It is, actually, what they're, what they're doing is they're just, they're merging the gentleman that sent this to me, who's Corey Edmonds.
The Brewston Family Medicine.
Yeah, and he.
Why would you need to do anything, I mean, it's a type of business. Is it for certificate of need?
Apparently, it's, it probably does, would be my guess. It doesn't say this in the letter of support, but I'm guaranteeing that it's.
So, um.
Cause see, they're gonna convert it and they're gonna merge with, convert it into an onsite, you know, onsite. It's gonna be betterly qualified health center, so that probably.
The Mountain Laurel Medical Center, they're from Maryland, Grandville, Maryland, primary. And I think when they combine, right now, Brewston Family Medicine is not a government supplemented healthcare provider. And I'm always ninety percent certain by the email I read that they would be, um, backfilled by the government a little bit with this merger. So I think that's why the letter of support is needed.
Yeah, I think so.
That's why I take on it, we just have one communication with them that. So thank you, Joe. Yeah. Anything, can you give us a update on employee hire?
Um, just the advertising is out there. Um, even before then, when we put everything online, we received six or seven applications within a period of three days, and so there is interest out there.
Great, 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 great. You know, I thought we would need an additional guy for snow renewal, but we're in springtime right now. Actually, never.
Don't say that.
March will come in like a long way.
Don't say that. It's another day, more.
It's not over yet.
I'm planning on going on a hike tonight.
Yeah, you should, it's gonna be nice.
I'm going to dinner with my wife.
It's Valentine's Day, I keep forgetting that.
Well, I'm, I'm taking, I'm taking a hike with my.
You're taking a hike with your wife?
Yeah, no, no, with my wife. Not, not yet.
First time's over.
Yeah.
And the only other thing I have is a reminder that February twentieth is the President's Day of Holiday, so the offices will be closed Monday.
Um, and as we are sitting here, I've realized that we failed to close the Board of Equalization for today at nine-thirty before we took in that one. So, just had an extra little opportunity there, but so that is officially, when is our next Board of Equalization review?
Uh, Friday, ten-thirty.
Yes, seventeen. Okay. And then, um, so we'll go on to Commissioner Thomas, we'll start with Commissioner Thomas.
Um, I was just gonna say it's Valentine's Day and it's very nice, so, um, get out and enjoy the good weather. I'm a avid hiker, so I like to hike a lot. And then we had a EMS five-sorry meeting last week, Joe Gaines.
I'm back up.
Samantha wasn't able to log on.
I was trying to get on via Zoom, but it just didn't connect.
Just trying to get the input of the local EMSs and how we can help them and what is the best way to fund them. And there was a lot of talks about getting a, um, some sort of, whether you partner with the Board of Education or it's just a third party thing, a, um, training program for teenagers so they can come up through school and be trained EMGs.
Yeah, and I think the, the, that meeting has really shifted, it seems to me, that the meeting has shifted about in the direction of what's the County Commission, the money that we're gonna give, what are we gonna do? What are you gonna do, how are you gonna help us? And that's not the purpose of that meeting. Purpose of that meeting is for them to come together, touch base on, um, calls, responding, those types of things.
I know, but it doesn't.
It always ends up.
Ever, ever since I've been on the committee, it's been flip-flopped around.
And the year prior, because you've been attending those meetings a long.
But I, but I'm happy to take the criticism and the, not criticism, but input that they have. If everyone agreed with everything, we wouldn't be coming to the best decision, so, um, good engagement is.
That's good, healthy.
Seriously.
Absolutely.
If everybody agreed on everything, um, a lot of people would be out of jobs, I'll put it that way.
All right, anything else?
Um, no, I, I don't think I have any.
All right, well, we just met Thursday, so.
Yeah, not much in between you.
Uh, this morning, I had to be at an LEPC meeting, your Local Emergency Planning Committee. Um, I have gone on to that since Dave's retirement. Um, it was a good meeting and, um, I look forward to the future meetings now that, I didn't know about it till yesterday, so I didn't really have a whole lot of time that I was able to prepare for it. But my role really doesn't start just yet, Dave is still wrapping up, and he wasn't there today, so, um, just, uh.
Transition here.
It's good, you know, being ready to respond in the event of emergency and having all agencies that can potentially, uh, you know, have to come together and work together, um, it's important. You know, there was representation there from, you know, your senior center, there's the school system, um, your, what is the radio, the radio group that.
The public, SERC, SERM, that S R N.
Yes, yes.
Statewide.
Statewide Emergency, yeah, Radio Network. Um, they are there, um, of course, all of our OEM and nine-one-one, uh, employees that served there were a part of that, state police, your local sheriff, um, it's just Camp Thousand, uh, your hospital, you have representation from the hospitals, anybody that would have to, that would be, it would have to respond or be a part of any type of emergency situation. It's just, it's just a great group, um, and I'm certainly proud to be serving on that committee, so, um, trying to think here.
I just have one other comment, so I might would just like to encourage the people of the county when they have a problem, whether it pertains to, um, something they're directly involved with or not, to reach directly out to us and not through a backward kind of way. I'll just leave it at that.
Sure.
Because we can only, um, come up with a solution to an issue if we know about the issue.
And a lot of times we have to redirect, you know, folks, because it's nothing that, but we can certainly know who to redirect people to, so that's, um.
I just hear a lot of, um, input that, you know, sticks to me eventually that it would be just too good if people would pick up the phone and call directly and give us that input.
All right, uh, Don, did you have anything under Commissioner comments?
It's all the three meetings tomorrow evening, so, because it's scheduled with a few, uh, people not being available. Just have the things going with that. Different things coming up in the near future, but that's really not it. Cause it's Board of Equalization, I'm early, and, and a lot more. I did, there was a bill, I don't know, the status, trying to check the status, but again, it was a bill that Senator Smith interviewed, so Senator Bill twenty-nine, I was dealing.
Word twenty-nine?
Yeah.
How often?
No, 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 it was just Senator twenty-nine.
Okay.
Twenty-nine. And it was dealing with, uh, what he's trying to do is keep, um, help with voluntary fire departments and nurse EMS services. And what it was to do is if any time there was something, so they wouldn't be getting unfunded mandates. So if some bill, something got changed in the law and said, now you're required of this kind of training, well, if that was to occur, then the state was gonna have to pay for it, not, it wouldn't be put on burden of the local.
And I think that time.
So if any time they do something, they change something, that the state would then therefore have to pay for that training.
Like inspect inspections and everything like that.
Well, no, it wouldn't be paid, it would be, if it would, well, any time, anything, if, if they had.
Well, that's like they just read in how many times you have to have your, um, vehicle inspected by the state.
Yeah.
State ambulances, fire trucks.
Yeah, and it, so, I don't know if that's exactly the whole gist of it, that's, that's what they're trying, that's what that bill's trying to do. And Senator Phillips serves.
And there's a lot.
Ring is the lead sponsor and.
There's a lot of, um, great deals that Senator Smith has out right now to help counties and county governments, so. I'm really following all of them, yeah. He's at.
That's.
Is it today or tomorrow that it's the last day to introduce a bill? It's, it's, we'll write at that critical point.
In reality, I think it is, it's right now, it's a crossover.
Uh, it's, is it today?
Yeah, I think so. I had the timeline, I had the timeline, I just couldn't find it right now. I'm looking for that timeline thing, but.
Okay.
Robbie, anything as far as like on the economic development work for him that you would like to share? We have a couple minutes, so if you've got anything that.
Um, I'm continuing to work with Bionic Tire, good. Um, contacted the DEP and we're getting some grant funding for them to do a phase one study on that site.
I'm great.
Um, you know, that's just to protect them as much as anything, but, um, so.
And that way they don't get into trouble in the future.
Yeah, so we got the paperwork yesterday from DEP, so it's just gonna be a matter of getting that filled out and sent back in, but that'll completely pay for the cost of the phase one.
Thank you.
And I'm continuing to work on water and sewer and broadband. With the, with the money that's been flowing and the needs that we have in Preston County. Um, you know, we're, we're working pretty much countywide on projects, it's, it's not just in one area, it's all over. So that is good. Trying to think if there's anything else really big. We got our strategic plan back and I think it's, will be finalized at the next meeting.
Oh, good, good.
The, today is the last day to introduce a bill in the House.
Okay, I knew it was.
Next week, on the twentieth, is the last day to introduce bills in the Senate. And then, basically, bills have to be out of the committee by the twenty-sixth, otherwise they're dead. And the last day for the third reading in the House is the first of March. Is it adjourned by the twenty-eleventh?
March.
Okay, any other Commissioner comments before we adjourn?
Um, no, I'm.
Good, you good, you good? Don, all right, this meeting is adjourned. And we have a work session at eleven o'clock. Did you sign the?
Yeah.
Did you sign?